Oh, it is time.
Done.
I gotta go to work. Have the head.
Called in the devil.
Have the nan.
He's taking a devil.
We got enough.
Captain, what about that one that you wouldn't have to recuse yourself from?
We're out of sevens.
Good morning, let me call this meeting to order. Apparently, our chairperson disappeared for whatever reason. But let me see if I can remember how we do this.
We do it at the end.
I got presentations, let it up. I'm ready.
Yeah, roll call.
Roll call. Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz is absent. Whitlatch.
Here.
Hilianno is absent. Aguilar.
Here.
Pledge allegiance, join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any items not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matter presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the planning commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time of the item comes up for planning commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the planning commission may be limited to at the discretion of the chair. At this time, please use the microphone and state your name and address if you have any public comments.
Good morning, Lisa Tannenbaum, Deputy County Counsel, and I'm coming up as a member of the public because in your, in my usual seat, you see Jennifer McNichols, who joined our office six months ago, and so we are now rotating her in to sit with different boards, so she will be here to answer all your questions today, but I will also be here in case something else crops up. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, well, welcome aboard. Okay, item number three, approval of minutes.
We're making a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made. And second, roll call, or...
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, this is confessions time. I honestly have a conflict with 4B, so I'll have to step out of the room when it comes. Commissioner Millies is also part of my office, but he's had nothing to do with this project, and he seemed a little bit short of, of...
Commissioners.
Commissioners today, are there others going to come late, or...
That I'm aware of, no. Nobody called in that they were going to be absent for this meeting.
Hey, why don't we poo 4B out, and then we'll just talk about A, B, and G. So that, apparently, we got some new procedures, and I did read it.
Mr. Chairman, you might need to go over those procedures before, because we see that it's only a matter that's on the table, that it's... And I thought that you suggested it go streamlined and solidly come to the...
Okay, well, that'd be, that'd be excellent.
If your commissioners can turn one of the outline packets that relates to item number five...
You want to put the microphone towards you?
If your commissioners can turn towards a one-page outline relating to item number five discussion. All right, I'm gonna run through each step, and then I will just, a mock application of this, so you kind of get the feel. Because one of my observations is that we're not consistent in how we're handling this, this parcel map agenda item, and the intent with the absence of the site plan review committee was to kind of make it streamlined for the applicant and the agent community, as well as for the planning commission. So, begin with, parcel map public hearings is a little bit different, little bit different. Process is still assured, but it's a little bit different from the regular agenda. That's what I wanted to do for you. So, let's start with step one. The planning commission chair would state that the commission will now take up the matter of the public hearing of parcel maps. That's item four, all the time on our agenda. Step two, the chair would then read the top two lines only of each parcel map agenda item. Example, if you look at your agenda today, just as an example, 4A, the chair would say, "Item 4A, tentative parcel map number PPM 14-021, Greg R. Holt slash Forster, Weber, and Associates." That's it. And then you read the rest of them. Then, the chair would state that the public hearing will now be open for all parcel map items. So you've identified for the public all the items, now you've opened the public hearing. Rather than you take each item, open the public hearing, which is inconsistent with the preamble of item number four. Okay, and then, this is important, step four. The chair will then ask whether anyone, which would be either commissioner, an applicant, an agent, or member of the public wishes to pull a parcel map agenda item for separate staff report and discussion. If no one says they want to pull it, no staff report will be given. That's part of the streamlining with regard to this, but you all have the staff report. It's part of the public record. Then, step five, which is very important, the chair will then ask whether anyone from the audience wishes to speak to any parcel map agenda item. So they would come to the podium. After any testimony, the chair would then close the public hearing and take the matter back to your commission. And then after discussion of the item, then the chair would read the approved language, and I'll do that, for each parcel map agenda item, and call for a motion and separate vote for each item. Okay, so example, item seven, or step seven would be, let's look at our agenda, 4A, you would read, "Approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14," et cetera, all the items, and, and then you take a vote after each one. So you have, you have the, the steps. It'll be placed before the chair every meeting, so you've got something to refer to, but I think this will streamline part four of our agenda, so that we can have an opportunity for due process, but then streamline the, this part of the agenda for the commission, the applicants, as well as the agent community.
So, Mike, in step two, you're gonna read each two-line for each item, right? Not just the first one?
Uh, that is correct.
You just used the first one as an example?
Correct.
But you have to read A, B, C, D, each two-line?
Yes, sir.
So you open them all up?
Correct. That's the trick. So you're announcing to the public, "I'm opening up the public hearing for 4A, 4B, 4C, 4D." So that way, we're consistent, and as a practical matter, as you all know, we have very, very few comments with regard to these items. That's why this, I think, is gonna work. We don't have controversy, basically, at all with regard to parcel maps, and the, the agent community normally would, would approach the podium, I believe, to say one of two things: "We agree," or they would want to talk about one condition of approval, or maybe a correction to the map, something like that. Otherwise, it's a pretty minor, minor discussion. Now, if it is a major issue, that's okay. The matter would be pulled. It'd be a staff report, and we would do it like regular agenda. So what I'm saying is that for those that really are not controversial, there's no need for further testimony, they can be streamlined. But if, in the exception, either a commissioner, an applicant, an agent, or member of the public wishes to pull a parcel map agenda item, staff is ready with their PowerPoint, we have the agenda in there, and we do it similar to the old, old process. But if we did that for every one, we would needlessly prolong the meeting when the matters truly were not controversial.
So I would suggest that it be an attachment to the agenda, so that it's always in there for reference.
For a while.
At least for a while.
We could do that. I like, too, it's a really big print for some of the older commissioners. You like the print, print? Big print. And in bold? Yeah. Those, thank you. And sometimes in caps. A good respect for senior citizens. Okay, very good. Any other questions?
Well, if a, if a item is pulled at the last minute, there'll always be someone from staff that can make that...
Absolutely, yes, yes. If not a staff member, the, the chief planner will deliver the report pursuant to our traditional style.
Okay, moving on now. I think what we're gonna do is, on 4B, we're gonna poo that, because I think Bill has a conflict on, interest on that one.
Yeah, we have to pull that, so...
So...
I'd just like to say also, it's up to county council, but even though Wayne and I work out of the same office, he has had nothing to do with this project, so...
It's really up to you, but it's more of, if there's an appearance of a conflict, even though he didn't work on the project, if you feel there's still no appearance of a conflict with...
I don't think there's any appearance at all, so...
Is there any income derived from this project?
That would benefit the office.
Very good. Not Wayne, not me. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't know the principals, per se, so I'm not... If you would not share in the commission or the profits associated with that project, then you're fine.
Okay, for, uh, let's move, move on. 4A, tentative parcel map number PPM 14-021, Greg R. Holt, Forster, Weber, and Associates. The other item is 4C, tentative parcel map number PPM 13039, Braden, Rancenti, and Force, Weber, and Associates. And item D, tentative parcel map number PPM 14017, Robert and Gail, Fisk, James, Winston Associates.
Very good.
See, what's step two? Okay, so we're gonna open the public...
For the record, Commissioner Diaz did it, I bet I'm not...
Oh, okay, for the record, Commissioner Diaz, I'll give him back his gab.
No, why don't you keep going, Commissioner? Go ahead, finish what you're doing. Finish it, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'll give it back to him when we pick Bill out of the chamber here. Okay, uh, okay, let's open a public comment, any comments from public?
Public hearing.
A public hearing?
For all, all the jet, all parcel map agenda items.
Okay, for all items except for 4B. Seeing none, do we have any discussions up with the commissioners?
No.
Seeing none, let's call for a vote for number 4A, tentative parcel map number PPM 14021.
And then you can read the approved language.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but also, since Commissioner Diaz is here, if you want to make an action on 4B, both Whitlatch and Millies could recuse, and you'd still have a nice...
I'll do that, just to keep the...
That's a good idea.
Okay, yeah, just to make sure everything's good to go.
I'm, I'm, I read it, so I'm prepared.
Evidence is, we finished these three votes here.
Okay.
Any, do we, do we have a motion for...
Make that motion to approve what you just read, which was, "Approve categorical exemption." Item 4A? Think which item it is, 4A. 4A. The categorical exemption consistent with California Environmental Quality Act and State SEQA Guidelines to Title 14, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to construction and location of a limited number of new small structures, and conditional approval, a tentative parcel map, PPM 14021, and you want the person making the motion or the chair to read that, right? That's my motion. Well, step seven said the chair, but you've deviated right away from the outline, but all we need is a second right now to finish this item.
I'll second that.
A roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes, I'm prepared, I, I went through it, so I can...
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
A, item C, tentative parcel map number PPM 13039, do we have a motion for that?
I think you're supposed to read the whole part, is what Mike is saying.
Be the approved...
That's part seven. I just need a motion.
But we can't make the motion, tell you...
That is part of the motion.
You can read the approved part.
Oh, okay. Uh, the recommendation is category exemption and consistent with the California Environmental Quality Acts and the State SEQA Guideline pursuant to Title 14, CAL, CAL Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to the construction, location, and limited time of new small structures and conditionally approved, tentative parcel map number PPM 13039.
Make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Excuse me, if I may, the reason for reading that is that since we're not having a staff report, it's very clear on the record what the action or the motion will be, because we've gotten the tentative parcel map read into the rec, beginning, and at the end, just before each vote, the record is very clear what you're voting on. It's to approve the CAT exam as the parcel map. So, record is clean, and also, everyone knows which item you're, you're voting on.
Okay, moving on to item 4D. It's, uh, recommendation is to prove a category exemption, consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act and the State SEQA Guideline pursuant to Title 14, California Code Regulation, Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to constructions and location of limited numbers of new, uh, new small structures and conditionally approved, tentative my, parcel map number PPM 14017.
Make that motion. Approve.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, I will now turn it to the official chair. Have item 4B.
Thank you, Mel. Sorry for my tardiness, no excuse, I had an early meeting and just lost track of time. Okay, so we are on item 4B, which is the parcel map, public hearings, and, man, this has not been a good day. Excuse me. Okay. I'm, I went over, I went over this one earlier, when I, when I read the packets here, so I'm trying to go by the plan here.
Well, everything has been done. All you need to do is just read the approved language and then take a vote. Everything else has been done.
You probably need to open...
So we've already done that up with the other three.
You would need to open...
Okay. So then, uh, item 4B is a tentative parcel map, PPM 14-022, and the action would be to approve a categorical exemption, consistent with the California Quality Act and Environmental Quality Act SEQA, and the State SEQA Guidelines pursuant to Title 14, pertaining to the minor land divisions, and to conditionally approve tentative map, PPM 14-022. Do I have a motion?
I don't think we opened a public hearing on this, how we...
We opened off it.
Didn't? Because we put it off the agenda.
All right.
Yeah, we probably should open the public hearing, then. Is there anybody that would like to make any comments on this issue? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing, and then move to the staff for a motion.
Make a motion we approved that.
To the commission.
I'll make a motion we approved, uh, 4B, ten, the tentative parcel map, PPM 14022.
I'll second. Roll call?
Gong.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, good enough, guys.
Very good, we'll get the hang of this, and it's a deviation from the typical agenda, but if any items to be pulled, staff report is ready to go, PowerPoint is ready to go, so there would be a report if there was a controversial thing, or someone wanted to report it. I have to excuse myself to go to a department head meeting next door, but the chiefs will take care of the report. Thank you.
You know, I'd just like to say that word deviation is, sounds like it's a moral dilemma, you know, like you're a deviant. You didn't mean to fly that, did you?
It means a change.
Oh, okay.
Did, did you guys do five, the discussion before you went into this?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I would've done.
Yeah, we're fine.
That's what I would've done, that way in here. Okay, five is done, so 6A is the director's report. Mr. Bach, are you doing that?
Yeah, yes, I will begin, chairman. Um, I'd like to turn it over to Hector Guerra, Chief Environmental Division, just to begin the report, and we'll go through my, then myself, and then Mr. Bond here, and we'll each give a update of what we're doing. So, if you have anything, Mr. Guerra?
Very few items. We are busier than heck. I'm down to 50% staff, and he is absent today. So I am the division. I guess I should introduce myself. Hector Guerra, Chief Environmental Planning, RMA Planning Branch. We are working on a variety of projects right now, and we actually just had a comment period close for an EIR, a program EIR for flood control projects. That's the three projects in one that are occurring in the north part of the county near Yedim Seville and the juvenile detention facility. We've received no adverse comments, we, uh, we're gonna move forward with that, and, and it may not come to your commission, it depends on the timing of a, of a, of a smart permit that can be put off. That's the beauty of a program EIR. You, you address the three, four, five components of it, and you can bring one item at a time, and all the environmental's been done for it, so that's, that's a good thing. We are getting ready to bring to you or commission the Pena Materials Recycling and Transfer Facility next month. That comment period closed about two weeks ago, we received no adverse comments, we received some comments from the public, they're concerned a little bit about some dust and some odor, but that can be remedied really, really quickly, real easily, like, for example, dust, water more, you know, that's simple, you know, so we can have that, if there's any odor, remedy it. For example, storage of, uh, they, they take green waste, lawn, lawn green waste, and from there, it's like, instead of sitting there for a week, you know how your lawn is, it just starts beginning to stink quite a bit, remove it within three days. Real simple things to remedy, no traffic issues, no water issues, so that's going really, really well. Uh, I am in the process of doing a recruitment for my division, I'm looking for a planner three and a planner four with emphasis on SEQA, and NIPA, our, our older brother for the federal side, so I'm hoping to get new help next month at the soonest, so that's really exciting for me. I guess I'm an outstanding leader, because Mr. Bach promoted to a chief planner, so I taught him so well, they took him from me. So I'm mad at myself every day. And I will bring you a, a summary next month also of what we accomplished during the last fiscal year, and I think the numbers will surprise you, they're very impressive, and your commission did a wonderful job of listening to us, listening to the public, and then, and then making your decisions to keep our projects moving forward. So you'll have a SEQA monthly report, for the annual report, I'm sorry, for each, for fiscal year 13, 14, and I'll bring that to you next, next month.
Any other EIRs in the cooker? I know you mentioned the north county one and the...
We have one more, we're not doing it. It's, it's being done by Provo and Pritchard, that's for the Tulare Solar Center, that's about a, I believe about a 1,200 to 1,400 acre solar farm, south of Ducor, so...
Who's doing that, what company?
Provo and Pritchard, PNP.
Who's the company?
They're all, uh, Wellhead, they're from...
Call it again?
They're called Wellhead.
Okay.
They're from the Sacramento area, and I think that's about the only ours we got going.
Yeah, Aaron Bach, Chief Planner, Planning and Project Processing Division, to give you an update on the community plans. Traver is getting dangerously close to getting completed here. We have done our complete streets walkability audits with the communities, with the consultants, and following the protocols. We have also elicited comments from the community through a series of meetings, and so we're, we've also reached out to the owners of the facilities along Sixth as well, and even the Simplot out there, to get illicit comments from them, so we've reached out...
Good, good attendance out there, with good input from the neighborhood?
Yes, yes. We, we have a lot of input, mostly centered around the school and safe routes to school, and a lot of it's focused on economic development and multitudes of uses, instead of really your standard land uses and zoning. So there'll be some interesting aspects to that, when we bring that to this planning commission, hopefully, within the next month, month and a half, and so, like I said, it's dangerously close to getting wrapped up. As far as Goshen is concerned, we've started over the last month to go out to the community and have more community meetings, illicit comments from the community. We have a potential, interesting project from self-help housing out there, as far as extension of what they've done on, uh, rigging, and so that project will hopefully come forward through this process, and right now, it, it has an application, and so, it's looking almost certain that that mixed-use project will, will come through this commission within the, by the end of summer, early fall timeframe, but that would be another EIR we're working on as well, and, and in addition to that, the Pixley Community Plan, probably gets the majority of our attention right now, it has a, a lot of interested citizenry, and so we've been walking the streets with them, we've attended probably more meetings out there, the school district is very involved, and so a lot of the folks. So, we've gone to the town council, we've gone to the PUD, we've, the utility district, and we've gone to the school board, and I've had several meetings with each one of them, and the community's been involved, and we've done the walkability audits for our complete streets with them, walking the entirety of Main Street the other night in 100-degree weather, and also, walking the majority of church, church, uh, Court Street, Court Street, sorry. Those are our two complete streets projects in, in Pixley. So we're, we're progressing on many fronts, including Early Mart, Early Mart's our, our next one, and as well as Three Rivers, that, that one keeps moving along, and Dave, and Dave Bryant and Mr. Spada have been attending monthly meetings out there, giving updates as they go along, and that, that one's a, going to be a very involved, involved process. So we're, we're progressing on many fronts, on top of all doing all the regular processing on, on a daily basis, and working with the agents and consultants as we, we push these projects along, so, to say the least, we're very busy through these timeframes, and hopefully we'll just be able to produce more. On a really high note, we just recently submitted some documentation to the board in regards to building permits, and the increases in building permits, so you'll, you'll see that information here shortly, if you haven't seen it already, as to the increases in the county, and, uh, looking at some statistics the other night, I mean, there might be as much as a 60% increase in housing. I, I know it's limited, 99 units to 160 units, but it's a, it's a, it's a good sign, a good indicator of what's happening in the county right now. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bond.
Whoa, whoa, not yet, Eric. With all your EIRs, there's, are you discussing if there's adequate infrastructure for growth? Because if we say, okay, you can do this over here, that over there, but there's no water sewer or...
Uh, yes, Commissioner Whitlatch, um, one of the main drivers under what we're doing right now with our community plan updates is SB 244, and that requires, for the legacy communities, the, um, lower-income communities, that we actually look at infrastructure in related, in relation to future growth, and it was, the legislation itself was created with the idea that if a disadvantaged community is on the edge or the periphery of a city, that the city would, the, the community, the county would be forced to do the studies for infrastructure, so that the city could take it over. The upside to us is, we have to do that for all our disadvantaged communities, whether they're next to cities or not. So for all these unincorporated areas, we're doing SB 244 level studies for all the infrastructure, and we have received a recent grant for $400,000 from the state Sustainability Growth Council to, to continue on that road of doing those type of studies. So yes, there'll be studies indicating not only if infrastructure's adequate or not, but what improvements are necessary to make it adequate. So it's, uh, you've heard of municipal service reviews that you do for, for LAFCO when you're going to annex a, a certain area, that's, that's kind of level of study we're doing for each one of these unincorporated areas, as we go through this community planning process.
Right, and then for the, if I can balance it a little bit too, on the environmental, we've hired consultants to do air quality, traffic, biology, cultural, historical, water quality, and water supply for all of the communities, so that we just mentioned, and two of them are environmental impact reports, and I haven't been bringing those up yet because we haven't started the preparation process, because our consultants are still working on, on the water supply and the air quality components of it, the traffic is virtually complete on all of them. So, uh, we do incorporate all of those, and, and like anything, when you do planning, everything has to come together, and the only way you're going to receive any type of funding is to demonstrate a need and to have a plan in place, and we're gonna have our plans in place with our environmental clearance, and then we're gonna say, okay, we have shovel-ready projects, we've already evaluated that, we've already evaluated that, here's, here's our growth, or whatever we might have, here's the demand, here's our supply, here's everything, we need, you know, $3 million, or something like that, and you're, you're, when you have shovel-ready projects done, when you have environmental When you have shovel-ready projects done, when you have environmental already done, it's a lot easier to secure grants from a multitude of sources, whether it's, you know, Caltrans-funded, or if it's going to be HUD-funded or CDBG. When you have those things, the very first question they can ask, where are you environmental? We've completed EIRs. Ooh, awesome. You know, so that helps us out tremendously. So we are all aware, especially of the water shortages we have here. We are in a deficit situation in the Tulare Lake Basin. We've been that way for a while. So any opportunity we have to recharge, we will. Any opportunity we have to reuse, we will. Anything, we have an opportunity to conserve, we will. So we weigh all of those factors. And there's a, those will be identified in the EIRs. And again, you know, your environmental document is to give you, you the planning commission and then the board, sufficient information to make a knowledgeable decision. And sometimes there will be adverse impacts. You know, sometimes it benefits the community to do what we call the statement of overriding consideration. Every EIR is not going to be peaches and cream. There can be an adverse impact. But what have you done to mitigate it to the extent practical, technologically, and reasonably achievable? You know, that's what we do. Cut down a tree because I need to put, you know, a freeway there that's going to accommodate everything. Sorry, that happened 198. For those of you who've been there for a long time, you know what happened to the expansion of 198. I actually wrote the comments on that when I was here. My first go-around, you're going to wipe out a lot of trees, you know, to Caltrans. And they said, well, if every tree we remove, we'll replace it with five, seven, ten, whatever number they ended up picking. And you see the trees there, they've been there ten, fifteen years, and they're still babies. Oaks take a long time to regrow, those kind of things. So we are addressing the infrastructure, as you mentioned, Commissioner Whitlatch. And I think that's when Mr. Bond's group will kick in too, because we need their expertise in engineering and so on and so forth. So with that, I'll wrap up.
I'm still very skeptical about the water because now it's been taken out of the hands of Tulare County since January. We've had this conversation. And, you know, they're going to monitor all our wells. Every community water system is going to be directed by somebody in the state of California, not us. And so, I mean, there's no sure way we can, you know, give people assurances we'll have water because somebody in the state of California is now running the show for Tulare County. So I don't know how you cover it, but I have major concerns about water.
Yes, Mike Bond, Public Works. If I can first just key on Hector's description of we're at the close of programmatic EIR for our three flood control projects. And this was, this was done in a very innovative way. Aaron orchestrated this at the very onset of our plan here to not only work through the EIR process, but also to obtain all the permits necessary for construction. And this is with the Corps of Engineers, California Fish and Wildlife, and the other agencies. No small feat. It was a year ago, April, that Aaron and I met with the Corps of Engineers and made a strategic accomplishment in terms of getting them to authorize us under a nationwide permit. And this was part of Aaron's plan. It was in it, and it has worked. So as we've progressed through the EIR in a collaborative way, we've also obtained the permits to do the construction. So this is another outstanding way that Aaron in particular orchestrated this whole process. And if I may, please don't tell him that I complimented him. But with regard to the water, I thought I'd maybe give you a sense of what we're doing to provide relief. And there'll be a meeting this evening, which I'll attend. I think Supervisor Worthley will also be there in Munson, for the Munson community. We've just released an RFP to start the feasibility study to see how we can come up with a solution for that community in particular. In Seville, there were four things that were done literally on an emergency basis in the last couple of weeks. And they're literally without water right now. With the onset of the high temperatures, the over-demand, the excessive demand on the system has really shut the system down. And I'll just touch on the four measures of relief. Two are related to bottled waters, just to, you know, address the absolute immediate needs. So that's going to be done in the very next days. And there's a $45,000 grant in particular for Seville, a $500,000 grant for a county-wide program. And these are done at the board just yesterday. And the two other projects in Seville, one is a water vending machine. So that'll provide water, you know, on demand should we have any future problems with the system. That project is going online. We're working with the Catholic Diocese with a property that they have right in the community to host the site of this water vending machine. So that's moving forward very quickly. But the most important emergency program is we're adding additional water storage capacity to the Seville system, which it does not now have. And that's a 15,000-gallon tank. So that, we're on a very fast track to try to get that in place, in service, just as quickly as possible. The timeframe roughly, the lead time is just ordering, having the tank fabricated. It'll be a steel tank. And that'll probably take five or six weeks. But we're staged so that the moment those materials are delivered, they can be constructed. And within a matter of days, it'll be a complete system. It'll have booster pumps, a control system. We have a back pressure sustaining device on the well. That will be installed this Thursday. We've actually notified the community that there'll be probably a short period where the system is shut down so that we can install that device, which will try to regulate automatically the pressure of the system at 40 PSI, so that hopefully they will have a more reliable source of water in the community as an immediate measure. And then, once the storage capacity, the 15,000-gallon storage capacity, I think that'll go a very long way to mitigate that. That tank will fill up and send, in essence, over the night hours, so that they have during the peak hours in the morning and in the evenings, sufficient water so they won't run out. So the well pump won't be over, there won't be an over-demand to that. So that just gives you a sense of what we're trying to do on a very emergency-type basis.
Do you get involved at all with the low-flow toilets and that kind of thing? Is that a grant-type thing? You can provide community, communities and residents with those new types of water-saving devices that will help conserve water?
Want to speak to that? Sure. Not that I'm aware of as far as grants. We're looking mostly for water-type grants, not on the conservation side, but for immediate relief, including even bottled water. So that's the type of grants we're pursuing. And then looking at long-term, Prop 84 and other types of grants for sustaining reclamation. It is a conversation we could have with the building department. We have done grants for demolition purposes in regards to housing. I did hear something from the community the other night as far as looking into water filters in the communities. So those are things we're investigating. But I can't say for certain weather, the building department's looking into low-flow toilets. Go ahead.
If I may, the, for instance, the Upper Kings Basin, IRWIP, Integrated Regional Water Management Plan Authority, is just, there's a first release of a round-two funding. And I'm aware of other entities that are advocating those types of project flow toilets, some other things too. So it may not be the county per se sponsoring something like that, but those are also, you know, other types of projects that are funded through grant money.
And one other suggestion, something that in the last couple weeks, the Sequoia National Park and Kings Canyon have installed refilling stations. And these refilling stations are, you take your own container and the water's free. Now, it seems in a place like Seville, they could really use something like that. Especially as an emergency measure, there must be grant money available because in a national park, the people that visit national parks are not necessarily low-income folks. So there must be a program available where we could put a refilling station at a good source and provide water as long as they have a container. Now, one other side benefit to that is this recycling thing. These things are just going to, you know, strangle us all eventually. And so it actually discourages people to use a single, maybe a stainless steel or a good, healthy container and use it over and over. So there's a recycling benefit and also a water benefit for people that can actually use that.
Commissioner Elliott, thanks for the comment and the question. The water vending machine would serve that purpose in Seville. So that is a project that we're, will be moving forward very quickly on. And that we've designed that so that these have, if you've seen them, they're, they call them a blue bottle, where you can just dispense water, maybe a five-gallon container would also be part of the...
Well, they're all over. It's just that, it just seems incongruous to pay that kind of money for water. It just, you know, especially in a low-income area, there must be some kind of program where we could help with that.
Well, the idea here is to have tokens. So it would essentially be free, but it would be more or less dedicated to the community.
Yeah. No, the token thing could work.
Here's something, John, that you may find hard to believe, because our family, which is about, has grown about twenty people total now, we've gone to thermoses. We don't use bottled water anymore. We take these thermoses of water from home that's filtered. And it eliminates the need for these bottles.
I use all stainless steel. This one was given to me last commission meeting.
Yeah, sure, we know, John. But I'm just saying that, but once again, to the less affluent community, because this is probably twenty bucks. But they, the same when you put your coffee in, it works well to take water around. Okay, I got a couple comments later, but when you're done.
I think we're done for the most part. So if you have any questions or comments.
Yeah. Fortunately, it talks so long, it made me forget one of them, but that's okay. We've had this conversation before, but this has to do with the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District and the county's policy on dust control. It's surprisingly brought to my attention that if you build a house out in the country, you don't have to provide yourself with an all-weather surface paving, you know, like DG. You can just drive in, the dust goes everywhere. But apparently, that's not the case with the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District. If you have a certain-sized parcel, you must, must put some kind of all-weather surfacing to keep the dust down. And I was just hoping that the county's policy would change on that. I think the building department is on board. But I don't want the San Joaquin Air Pollution Control District down here citing this and causing this problems on this dust control. It's a problem, so...
We'll research that further. I mean, I wrote the dust rules. I know them really well. But I don't implement them. That's a policy decision and how they did it. So let me call my friends over there and see what's going on and...
But I don't think we want to alert them to come down here. Voluntarily, we should be able to do it. And the building department's on...
We need to be their eyes. You know, they don't know the day-to-day of everything that goes on. You know, so if, there's got to be some practical applications to stuff too. You know, and I know as we established thresholds, it was because, you know, they're typically for urban areas. You know, the rural areas are pretty much like, oh, okay. But let me check into that to see what they're doing, and then I'll get back to you.
Because your building department's on board with this. They would, you know, they would like to implement that, but it's currently not their policies.
Yes, Commissioner Whitlatch, as far as our standard conditions go, we require all-weather purposes when they are required by the Public Works and/or the Fire Department. And for residential homes, a dirt roadway is deemed to have been adequate under our standard conditions. So if we were to make a change to those standard conditions, that would be something that would need to be approved by the board as well. So we'll look into the air district requirements. And if the building department is on board, then it's just a matter of getting a more formal approval through yourselves and up through the board. So it'd be a process.
Yeah. And then the way the air district rules were written, we know they had various situations for various type of usages. And like, we differentiated between a road and a driveway. You know, a lengthy driveway is not considered a road. And then what we did is to allow the latitude of whatever is sufficient to reduce fugitive dust to a certain limit. That gave the owner, the user, a range to do what they needed to do, whether it was, you know, DG, whether it was asphalt, whether it was cement, whether it was some other type of dust suppressant and organic dust suppressant. Well, people mistake road oil to be, it's not going to harm the environment at all. It's just called road oil. You know, whatever you use, a polymer, you know, something like that, whatever you use with sufficient, lower speeds in some cases. You know, so, and water, you know, whatever they use. So we gave them that latitude because some operations were more intensive than others. But we did differentiate on a road and a driveway. You have to have a lengthy approach. Sorry, that's my driveway that I'm a half-mile setback because I have a huge piece of property. That's my driveway. It's not a road. It's not public access. It's a private road. We differentiated between a private road and a public road. Private unpaved road, private paved road. It was ridiculous. But we did that so we could have so much latitude for everybody. But let me check into it and see what their policy is.
This don't take forever on this. Let's try to make it simple. But, you know, it's dust and...
I have a, I'll call them when I get back. But we are working on updating their...
Ask your chief building official how he feels about it. He's got a lot of data.
I'll talk to you about this. But we'll get on that right away.
Okay. And I can't remember the last item, so you look out.
Okay. That concludes the staff's report to you.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Moving on to item seven is the planning commission discussion items and a request for future agenda items. Anything from the commission?
You know, the county continues to help people move through the process of development very quickly. And, you know, it's, I think it's making the city, as I say, a really nervous, and now it reminds me of the last item. You know, the city of I say has bought a bunch of land around, I call it the flea market. They call it the market on 198. You know, that thing has been there for years and years. And it's, I think it's important to the community because people buy their produce. They buy all kinds of things there. I don't think I've ever been there, but a certain part of our economy is, it's important for those people. But now the city has bought the huge parking area, which is this sunken thing there. And they're going to use it for ponding of water, which I think is a great idea. They bought the Andretti Ranch, which is to the north. They're going to demolish all that for water storage. But now there's no more parking. And apparently, there's some parking issues about where they want to park. Once again, dealing with dust control. And it seems to me that property is out of the urban area boundary, and they've annexed it. How do you annex property that's not in your contiguous?
Commissioner Whitlatch, there is provisions through LAFCO and through state law that the city can reach out. I think the limitation is a few hundred acres for infrastructure purposes. So yes, they have the power, state authority, to reach out for infrastructure purposes. I believe we're moving, trying to assist that project as far as the parking and accommodating the parking. And we're moving through that process very, very quickly.
Mr. Bond is correct. You'll see this contiguous land, a city only this usually detaches the wastewater treatment plant. You know, it's still considered part of the city, but there's no continuity. There's no strip to say it connects to the city. That happens quite often. It's a public benefit. It's a public use thing.
But I think there is a side effect to this. Those people who have businesses along there already suffer because there's not adequate parking. You know, I hear people complaining who have businesses along that... complaining who have businesses along that, the boat guy all the way down to the irrigation company, they, you know, they can't function on the days they have that market. And now the city just bought up all their parking. And it seems to me that the county, you know, the city's always condemning us for things they do. Well, they've displaced the economic heart of Tulare County's, you know, the people who do business there. And, yeah, to say something. I don't mind going to the council and stirring the pot up. They already don't like me sometimes, so.
Your points well made, Commissioner. And like I said, we're trying to accommodate that, the, the, the market on a processing level. But as far as the parking out there, I do understand there is some street parking. But you're right, we might, we might have lost a lot of parking that would have an impact on, on the businesses out there. And it's unfortunate, but like Mr. Garrett said, it is a, something that's necessary for the, the city. So we, we can definitely investigate that and look into how the county can assist in, in economic development of that area.
Now, if it's a look at the whole area, how we need to replan it, you know, to accommodate a larger business area, then that's what we should do. So, and, and not two years from now. You guys are doing a great job, but, you know. But I'm all about, you know, complaining about getting things done as soon as possible legally.
And, you know, we are doing a good job, and so are you guys. What we done is like, we have, like, Early Mart was just raised, and that just, my little light went on. There's a small developer out there who has a parcel just off of ninety-nine, and he divided into seven different parcels, and he attracted the Autozone. You know, from the Autozone, he then attracted the Dollar National or the Dollar Value, what the value?
Dollar General.
Dollar General, always do that. Well, he landed the big fish. He landed a McDonald's. So now he also has two pizza franchises, you know, basically bidding to see who's going to get there first. You know, so it's, it's working. It's coming together. And, and, and it all started off with, on a buy right, a commercially zoned area, where your commission went ahead and did a parcel map. And from there, he's able to then, you know, do some economic development for a small community. It's going to be very beneficial for them.
And the reason I know so much about what goes on there is I do have a financial interest in property to the east. But, but still, I mean, it's, you know, whether I have a financial interest or not doesn't really make any difference. It's still an economy that goes on there. And I know you're doing the best you can, but if you please look at it, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The two county councils will be clear.
We have three today.
Yes, sir. We're in trouble. I'm going to check us out. Okay, if there's nothing else, and we're, they're on item eight, we're adjourned until July twenty-third, twenty fourteen. Same place, same time.